Good evening. We'd like to welcome everyone to the October tenth, two thousand and seventeenth work session of the Precyne County Board of Education. If you would all stand as you're able while Ann Crowe does invocation and leads us in the pledge.
Heavenly Father, thank you for this day which you've given to us, this beautiful world that we have before us, and all the gifts that each one of us have to give back to the community and to give to each other in honor of what you have given to us. We ask that you lead us and guide us and direct us tonight as we make decisions on behalf of our students and our community regarding the best education for our children. We ask that you be, in this world, be with us in the United States as we go through our tumultuous time where there's so much death, so much anger, and so many misspoken words. We ask that the love that we should be having for others starts showing forth rather than the incredible animosity that we have in this world. Help us to teach our children to understand who they are and to be able to go out into this world and be successful and learn to love each other and to be mindful of what their place is in creation. Lead us, drive, lead us, direct us, and guide us tonight as we make those decisions. Amen. Salute.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we have an agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
I'm moved.
Second? Motion by Tom and a second by Nancy. Y'all in favor? That's unanimous. First up tonight in presentation and discussion is the fiscal eighteen local facilities plan with Mr. Tim Amerson.
Tonight, I'm bringing back the draft of the plan that we've got prepared. Our plan is to go ahead and invite the facility survey team to come in November. They'll go through our school buildings, through the plan, and hopefully give us the certification and approval we're looking for. Then, once they complete that process, we'll bring the final draft of the plan, the final copy of the plan back to y'all as approved by the certification team.
That's when they have people from different counties as well?
Yeah, we'll have about five people from surrounding counties, between facility planners, construction, and superintendents from school systems come look, plan, look at our schools.
I didn't know they actually went to school. I knew they looked at the plan, but they actually visit our school?
We actually go visit about three or four sites. So we'll talk about maybe the condition of older schools that we rehabilitated and see some of the, like, new additions we've done at the high schools and how they were incorporated.
So when will you bring it back to us?
They'll come back to y'all December.
December already? Okay, perfect.
All right, this page y'all seen before. Basically, the left-hand side is our new FTE projection page, which shows where up to a rate of about eighteen hundred fifty students per year that were growing compared to last year's projection rate of seventeen hundred sixty-one. And this will take us to a population total of about fifty-five thousand in the school year twenty twenty-two. And part of the task we had to do working through the plan was we had two thousand two hundred seventy-three new students there on the bottom right-hand corner that we had to find a future home for, so we began allotting those students to future schools.
So what you're saying, based on that enrollment projection, that's what we expect to happen over the next several years?
That's what the state is basing our growth on, so that is the state's formula. We were, they were considering, you'll see that in the five-year projection on the left-hand side, they only did a growth rate comparing the last three years of growth, where typically they do a five-year growth averaging.
So that helps us.
So that came out to our favor. We got a little bit higher growth in those years and get us a little bit more FTE earnings in the future.
I think they did that several years ago because they were so involved with us.
We did have, we had that twenty-ten year, which was really a drop year after the recession, and they had to kind of go back and drop that year off and only count, you know, those three, four years instead of that twenty-ten, because it was a big ding in our
Yeah.
...growth pattern. All right. So again, we have last year's entitlement sheet that showed we had about sixty-eight million dollars of eligible need. At the bottom of that column, you see we actually took out about thirteen million nine hundred seventy-two thousand dollars to fund the Alliance Academy, which then dropped our needs earning down to about fifty-five million. Now, we are doing updates, so as schools age and such, we build in some additional renovation modification work for them. And of course, as we get the new projection numbers, we start adding those back into the other schools.
So that's not, so that construction need is life cycle and new growth?
Yeah, the construction need is basically the three primary ones, which is new construction for new schools or classroom additions, modifications, which are primarily your HVAC, electrical roof systems, and then your renovations, which is replacing millwork and repairing the school, those type things that over twenty years have aged and need to be replaced, door, door hardware, et cetera. So those things, they
Officially.
...review, and they do have a, their price schedule, which isn't quite up to par with what the actual cost is, and we'll get to that as we get towards the end. So in the long run, elementary schools, we have fourteen hundred and eleven available instructional units, i.e. classrooms, and by the state, we should have sixteen hundred and eleven, which means we need two hundred more elementary school classrooms. This equates to about two elementary schools that we will be earning in the next application program. We have six hundred eighty-one middle school instructional units, shows that we need eight hundred twenty-nine, so we have a hundred forty-eight more to construct. That will be the next middle school and begins developing a second middle school. So middle school eleven and twelve are now on the, on the drawing board. And then, for the high school, we have six hundred and eighteen available instructional units, and it shows that we have sixty-two units that will need to build for the next high school. You'll see next to that number is nine hundred nineteen. We only have eleven hundred and, what was that number, eleven hundred and eighty students that were trying to place for classrooms, which will earn the sixty-three state-funded classrooms. The nine hundred nineteen is the local FTE projection, which will allow us to go ahead and complete that school to the full twenty-one hundred students. So we have a little play with that. We do expect by the time we make application for the future high school, we will again get the additional seven hundred ninety-three high school students again allotted as the projections go up again.
Can you go back through that again? I think I kind of followed, I didn't completely follow you on that when, yeah, that, that's six eighteen, this gets in the nine nineteen.
Right. And we have the one hundred ninety-two instructional units, that's shown as a net gain slash loss. Those one hundred ninety-two units are Denmark High School and the Alliance Academy. So they are funded, they are basically kind of on the state's books. We just haven't opened them and put them in our inventory as available yet.
Okay.
All right. So this brings me into a quick little summary of what this, the goal of the facility plan is, is to show the state what you really have for need. Again, this is based on the state's formula. They pay eighty-four dollars a square foot for a high school classroom. We know our real cost is about a hundred fifty-five to a hundred sixty dollars a square foot, so everything comes in about fifty-fifty with it. In the twenty nineteen plan that we got, entitlement sheet we got this year, we had about fifty-five million dollars in total need. Right now, the total improvement cost eligible for earning entitlement for the plan is a hundred and five thousand, a hundred and five million sixteen thousand six hundred and one dollars. So if everything works out right, that that will project it, give us a three point, three point two-three percent of the state funding. That's three hundred million dollars that they allocate each year to go out for funding. And if that three point two-three percent is correct, then we should be earning about nine point six million dollars the next time we get one of these sheets at the three hundred million dollar level. So you can see that that has bumped us up to about four million dollars additional earning from the state each year, and that's what our goal was.
How long have we been at that three hundred million dollar level?
It's been, well, it began in the original OCGA one sixty dash twenty, back in nineteen ninety-two, ninety-three, I believe, is when all that was developed with state funding.
The discussion.
I know, it's been forever. It's crazy.
So again, it used to be a two hundred million regular and a hundred million for exceptional growth, and a few years back, they rolled that whole three hundred together.
Which hurts us. It hurts us continuously, yeah.
All right, so as I said, bringing y'all this plan tonight, let y'all read through it. Appreciate the few comments y'all provided me. I'll check with our facilities consultant when she returns on Thursday about cleaning up some of those typographical errors, errors on the plan. We'll bring the survey team through in November. Hope to do that before Thanksgiving break, and then if everything gets blessed and approved by them, we'll bring you a certified plan with their report back in December. Once y'all approve the plan, it goes to the State Board of Education, where it'll be adopted and become our plan effective July first, twenty eighteen, and run through June of twenty twenty-two. Any other questions?
Just one other clarification. I think we talked about this a couple days ago, and I haven't gotten through it all, it's a hundred and eighty-some pages, and just got it yesterday, so we're looking at it. But originally, I thought when we were doing the last plan, that we were trying to shoot to get the high schools in the twenty-four to twenty-five hundred range
Yes.
Across the board, but we're no longer doing that with last?
Well, we still have the plan. Right now, with the FTE, I have the state's projecting for high school FTE, and along with what I count as my balance, I'm counting about fifty-five thousand nine hundred in my five-year projection page. So we're applying at nine hundred students to that high school to finish taking it to twenty-one hundred. Now, we still have the plan, which we look at also, to do the eighteen classroom addition, which will give us the full capacity at twenty-five hundred.
So we are thinking about doing it at last?
We do have that as part of the plan.
I guess I thought, but I saw the zeros in there.
We did, we did the same thing with Denmark, that we, actually, the application for Denmark was one hundred and nine instructional units, it's a capacity of two thousand one hundred students. We did not put in the application for the additional eighteen, nineteen classroom units. Those are locally funded, because we were not sure between what we had available, how much it would cost us if we wanted to commit to all twenty, all one hundred twenty-nine units. So the application was only a hundred and nine. The eighteen is all local back to us, but because we had a wonderful price from the contractor that we couldn't refuse, and we went ahead and stepped forward and did the hundred twenty-nine total.
So it's not in the state facilities plan, but it's in our future plan, so to speak?
That's right.
A local plan?
We have local plan.
We couldn't justify that on paper.
Right.
We knew it was coming, but at that point.
There's other things, just to kind of clarify, we have the Academies of Creative Education. That is a locally funded building. All of our high school and middle school FTE, for the most part, for that facility, are applied to the future schools. You know, we need to have those students populate in the school for that funding, so if we pulled them out and tried to make the Academies of Creative Education a state-recognized, funded facility for that, then it will remove from the other schools that we're trying to work towards.
So that nine million dollars just adds on to the fifty-five million, is that correct, that we earned?
No, that hundred five million just replaces that fifty-five. We've, we've gained another sixty million dollars
Okay.
...of need. Very much being a high school, two elementaries in the middle, that's the biggest part of it.
But the need does not equate to how much money we get, it's two different things. It's
That's right. That, that need is what they used to establish that ratio, and hopefully, we're going to take our ratio from one point seven-seven percent, or seven-two percent, I forgot what it was, to that three point two-four percent. And that, that's compared against about three point two-five billion dollars of statewide need. Every school system counted is about three point two-five billion dollars, and so our little hundred something million dollars is three percent of that.
And when they got rid of that, that fast-growth component, separate component, the ratio is what changed in order to include it in the, the big pot?
Well, the ratio didn't change. We're, we're treated just like every other school, so we put our need in there, which, like I said, now we'll go to a hundred and five million dollars with the need, where Fulton County has their same need for new classrooms, renovation modifications, Chattahoochee County, Auburn County, all of them had the same plan, and they all identify that need.
So it used to be that last hundred million was the high growth, now it's divvying up to everybody?
Yeah. Let's see if I can find what I was looking for.
So it's a double bang for us, because it's been three hundred million for way too long. State number of students in the state has grown, and yet that number's been capped, and the construction costs have gone up as well, so it just is an antiquated
Yeah, the state has adjusted their square footage. When I first started working with state local facility plans, they were doing rates of about forty-eight to fifty-two dollars a square foot. We're now up to eighty to eighty-four dollars a square foot. So they have tried to make those cost increases as they could to apply for the funding, but again, it's still being distributed, still distributing the same three hundred million dollars year after year. And just to clarify that point, on the middle of this page, where I talk about the hundred and five million dollars, you can see right there below it, the cost ineligible for earning, that one hundred thirty-three million dollars you can call local cost. So you can see in the plan, we have about two hundred and thirty-eight million dollars worth of local, worth of need, a hundred and five of it's recognized by the state.
Do they put, Fred says there are a lot of small counties that are not growing, but they, they, they have access to this money for improvements for their schools. Is there more weight put on improving old buildings versus new construction, or is it the same across the board?
The state funding formulas are created that way, so they're equal for us versus a smaller, older system. The qualifications are your building has to be for most modification renovation twenty years old, and then, like I said, that, that cost for replacing the HVAC is the same, seven to eight dollars a square foot, the same building additions, eighty dollars a square foot. So they use the same numbers in any big schedule, so if you're building a classroom, you get six hundred square feet for a high school classroom, six hundred fifty square feet for a middle school. We might build a seven hundred square foot classroom, but we're still funded at that six hundred square foot level.
And you only, yeah, you only get that state money if you can prove that you have the money, you're, you want, you're matching funds, so to speak.
That's right. We, we do have to match fund. The, the state likes to boast that they will take care of eighty percent of the cost for doing the bricks and mortar building, and twenty percent of it is our part, and as we know, by time we put in the parking lots and the
All the land.
...play fields, everything else that goes with the school site, it comes out, on best case, about a fifty-fifty split.
Are the other numbers about right, like for eight, for the HVAC and all that, that the money they give us, can we get it done for that, or do we?
No, we, it's about twelve to fifteen dollars, depending what
And they give us seven or eight?
Yeah. And roof, roof is about six, seven dollars a square foot, and it's about twelve dollars a square for roofing.
So even though the state may have moved their numbers up, they're not up to what
That's right.
...it really costs?
That's a question for you tonight, huh? Can you give all the answers?
I can go find some more if you need some more answers. Thanks so much.
Thanks, Tim.
Well, with those plans comes construction. Mr. Winning.
Good afternoon.
Good morning. I think you get the award for the best pictures ever this month. That was, pictures are phenomenal. It is.
It is. So fortunately for Denmark High School and Alliance Academy, we're either on schedule or depending on which building element, ahead of schedule. So to reorient you with Denmark High School on the lower right-hand side is Mullenex. So you'll see over the last thirty days, significant progress has taken place both on the site, you know, as well as the building. We have several of the athletic fields now substantially complete, parking, the site lighting for the parking lots, as well as the athletic fields. And then focusing in on the building for the, the right-hand wing, which runs parallel with Mullenex. That wing is the furthest along in terms of the, the critical elements of building dry-in, the brick, the roof, the curtain wall, the metal panels. As that is all now substantially complete, that allows us the interior finishes of what I'll call the hard finishes that aren't dependent on climate control, things like the porcelain tile now is complete inside that wing, VCT, acoustical ceiling, the grid. But parallel with that mission of getting the building dried in, what you don't see underground that took place the last thirty days as well, is we do have permanent power now from Sony and permanent gas from Atlantic Gas Light. That's critical for construction. That gives us now our permanent HVAC and climate control to then be synchronized with the dry-in ahead of the winter coming in in December, such that the next interior finishes sequence of things like the millwork, carpet, the acoustical ceiling tile, things that are more dependent on full climate control, that allows us the next sequence. So I first showed you the juxtaposition of the wing that we have most complete. On this side, to the later part of the page, is the gymnasium, and then the upper part to the right-hand side is the, the ad-alternate classrooms that we discussed. So we're working our way counterclockwise around the building for, not only the sequence I described for the dry-in, but also all the MEP finishes and, and commissioning to take place. So this is the, the least complete, all of which will be done by the end of November, again, in time for that. Construction is always focused on the, the winter weather aspect coming. So that would then give us the, the five months of interior finishes, which is well-suited to, to our overall schedule and, and what we're trying to achieve. So just as exciting, or even more exciting, Nathan and Heather toured our football field the last few days. So this view, and I'll say this is like this panoramic, parabolic fish lens, is, was taken for the photo to give you a better feel for the field. The bleachers, that's an optical illusion, we do have straight bleachers, we don't have curved bleachers. But it's really a sight. It was lit up this morning in the dark, which is kind of neat, and already, you know, Nathan and Heather getting excited about the school. And spring practice really starting in late April before we open it up even academically. And to the right-hand side, we're thrilled, the intergovernmental agreement, football field is now substantially complete. Precyne County Parks and Rec was out there today for the inspection, so they're thrilled, and, and that's just a great synergistic mission that we've got with, with them. So people are pleased with that. The first view I showed you was home looking at visitors, so this is visitors looking at home. So the other overview, now that we'll be in the next couple months transitioning from the exterior being complete, we're, you know, looking forward to showing you the interior shots, just going back a little bit. While it is the prototype of Lambert, you know, we always strive for continuous improvement, looking back for the feedback. So as an example, the, the classrooms are slightly larger, right, that was the feedback. The center transportation corridor now is twenty feet versus Lambert being a smaller corridor, so we've taken into account, because it bottlenecks occasionally during the, the transition. So, you know, this is really an accumulation of the feedback that we've gotten from our past prototypes. Always striving, and we'll be excited to show you those photos over the next couple months.
Where's the press box?
The press box is the last thing that's not there yet. You're, wow! You're, you're good, you're good.
Is it going to be above?
It's, it's, yeah, it's, it's above the center of the D. Wow, that's a detailed question, that's great. That's the one sub that's giving us trouble, so, but they are supposed to be starting next week.
Tell Violet asked about it.
Take my job, geez. So Any, any questions on, on Denmark? Any detailed questions?
Didn't you flip the band room, too, with the stage or something for inner?
But, uh, Tim is still not.
Put in the band and the stage or something because of the need for the band to get, get their instruments in and out, was that an adjustment made for that?
Yeah, we've got the band actually back at the Fine Arts Queen, they're on the same quarter, and it's at the back of the auditorium stage.
Right.
And they also are right across from the loading dock area. We've actually put in a large garage-type door that opens from the loading dock into that hallway to be the band, the Fine Arts, uh, drawing area and the
That's great.
You might have to think of another tour sometime.
So for Alliance, similarly, a lot of progress on the site since you saw the last era of photos. Similarly, what you don't see underground, successfully milestone achievements of, in this case, we have Georgia Power, not Sony, but Georgia Power does now have their permanent power in, Atlantic Gas Light is complete. So that same sequence of what I described to you of the buildings being substantially complete and dried in allows for porcelain tile finishes, VCT finishes, but until we get the climate control, which will take place over the next couple months, do we move to millwork, carpeting, acoustical ceiling tile, gypsum wallboard, some of those more climate control features. But it, it follows the same path, and I realize that photo's a little distant, that should point out, in the overall progress of the opening, junior achievement now that did get a little bit of a later start than our true Alliance Academy, we're catching that up on the schedule as well, and pleased to report that. Any questions on Alliance or Denmark? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, next, we have policy revision JBCCA two with Mr. Perkel.
I have a policy revision, which is policy JBCCA two, unsafe school choice option. There's really, it's, it's not a lot, it's just a couple things that they're suggesting that in the first paragraph, that we eliminate No Child Left Behind Act and replace that with Elementary and Secondary Education Act, ESEA. And down in number two, where the, where it says the facilitation of the transfer of students who are victims of certain violent criminal offenses within ten school days of the, of the commission of the offense and to the extent possible to a school that is. I say, so the suggestion is to strike out making adequate yearly progress and has not been identified as being on school improvement, corrective action, or restructuring, and replace that with to a school that is in compliance with current state and/or federal accountability requirements. So those are, again, I said, it's, like I said, it's Those are simple revisions, so we'll lay on the
It changed again.
Yeah, so we'll lay on the table for thirty days and come back your next
Does accountability have two L's?
Probably.
I think it, it, I think it should only have one.
Oh, do I have two?
Yeah, you have two.
Oh, I'm sorry, you know it has, yeah.
All right, so we'll come back to that next one.
Has one L.
All right. Maybe just going to stay up there for our next topic then?
I will.
We have the two thousand eighteen nineteen school calendar draft.
Okay, this is the two thousand eighteen nineteen student calendar draft. We did receive input from local school councils, as we have done in the past several years before we published the, the first, or the draft for the calendar. And it's a couple of things that, that this calendar has that's a little bit, bit different from the calendar this year and the last few years, is that local school councils asked that we move the August thirty-first, excuse me, August twenty-ninth early release date to August the thirty-first, as that is the day before Labor Day, so we, we did that. The other thing is that Dr. Bearden had asked Ms. Harrison in Teaching and Learning and myself to work together to add an additional professional learning day for staff members. So Fonda and I have worked together in creating that, and that professional learning day is, was added on January the seventh. Originally, the, the draft that Originally, the draft that the local school councils looked at had those two days being the seventh and eighth, and their suggestion was to back up winter break and have the first day or the end of the semester to be the twentieth as opposed to the twenty-first, and which then shifted that day, those days back one. So that was the other thing that we did. The final difference in this calendar draft than in calendars in the past few years is that due to adding the additional professional learning day, this makes this calendar one hundred and seventy-eight student?
Hundred and seventy-nine.
I'm sorry, one hundred and seventy-nine student days as opposed to one hundred and eighty. We're fine with that based on the number of instructional minutes that we have. Typically, that's what we go by, is the instructional minutes, and we have obviously ample instructional minutes that we're okay with, one hundred and seventy-nine days as far as the State Department of Education is concerned. So we're not really concerned about that. So we left it like that to put out for feedback, to see what we get for feedback from that. So basically, everything else pretty much is the same as what we've had over the last few years. We do start school on a Thursday, which seems to be a very popular thing for principals and staff and a lot of parents. Of course, we always get feedback about starting early or wanting to start later, not, no feedback of wanting to start earlier, but wanting to start later. And then we, this calendar has the fall break, the week for fall break, and all the other holidays are the same. So if the timeline that we will go by for the calendar draft is to present this to you all this afternoon and to post this on the website tomorrow for feedback, and that will stay open October the eleventh through October the twenty-seventh, then we'll collect the feedback, I will collect the feedback, make any adjustments, and then present you all with the calendar draft at your meeting on November the seventh, and then ask you to approve the calendar on November the fourteenth.
So it sounds like there was really good feedback from the LSCs this time to tweak a little bit, so that was helpful.
Joey, in one of the LSC meetings I was attending, it was a long discussion on the calendar, and the concern, from the teacher's standpoint, that we do have the half-day professional development days, but that by the time you get there, there's only maybe two or three hours of quality time. But they all would love more, and of course, we had more years ago. And if there was a way to get back to that point, I don't know if there is, because of, for instance, the thirty-first being a full day instead of a half-day, but then you can't get all the days academically in for that first semester. Then the other problem is teachers having professional workdays or half-days and then having to get all the work done, which is why they wanted to put that day in December up, you know, not getting out at the last minute so that they can get all the grades in before the semester is over. You can't make a perfect calendar, and they actually wanted, what their discussion was, was to shorten the break in December to just two weeks and put those two days down in March because it's the only month that they don't have a break. So it was just an interesting conversation. I don't know if that's feasible or what other things, but I know that y'all reviewed it, and the calendar is fine with me. I just wanted to share that discussion, that I thought their emphasis about teachers, and one reason we did the fall break was to give them a break because it's such a strain to have to work with students day in, day out without having time to reevaluate or take, catch your breath, and of course, March is the main month before testing. And it's just, it's a puzzle, but there was some very good discussion.
Mr. Perkel, can I touch on that for a second?
Sure.
That was a lot of the conversation around the calendar, and one of the reasons you see a full professional development day on January fourth and seventh, because we do hear from our teachers a great deal that they need more, and we hear that from our principals as well. Half-days are not popular at all with our community. It creates a lot of logistical hardships, and we understand that. And we've also found that over the years, we're more productive if we have a full day at professional development than a half-day, because in the life of a classroom teacher, you're working all morning and your mind's focused there, and to make that transition into professional development's really challenging. We do understand with this calendar, January seventh is one we talked about a lot, because we know the vast majority of our community's back to work, and we know we're probably gonna get some feedback about that. But the reason we did propose January seventh and wanted to put it out there is to, again, a destiny that you brought up about sustained professional development. Now we're gonna have two days, if this passes, all day on the fourth, all day on the seventh, where we can get a lot accomplished, very much focused at that time for our teachers. We feel that's a more efficient use of time. When you start getting into March, we're getting towards the end of the school year, you're starting to get into the state assessment season, and we have also heard feedback that those days in March are not as productive as they are at the beginning of a semester. So we took all of that into consideration. This calendar's a little bit different than what we've had in the past, and again, especially that January seventh does kind of stand out, and we'll see what we get for feedback, but that's the reason we proposed it the way we did. Is that fair?
Yeah, that's exactly right.
All right, thanks.
Okay.
All right, next is redistricting with Mr. Perkel.
Before he starts, I'm gonna just make a couple of comments, if I may, about redistricting. First of all, I just want to say, I want to thank the committee for their many hours of dedicated work. Redistricting is not the only responsibility of our committee members. All of the professionals who worked on this recommendation are also completing their normal day-to-day responsibilities. None of that goes away just because we're going through redistricting, and they've all continued to fulfill those responsibilities in an exceptional manner, and I really appreciate that. The vast majority of our feedback from our public does come from the proposed high school redistricting, so I'm gonna focus my comments solely on high schools tonight. This is not an easy task, I'm sure most people recognize that. It's not easy because we know we have to move students from a school from which they are familiar to one to which they are not familiar. I said on several of the redistricting committee meetings, and for the most part, I listened, I asked a few questions, but I can proudly say they have completed their work to date professionally, ethically, and without bias. Their decision is based upon certain criteria that they followed, and Mr. Perkel is gonna share that criteria in just a moment, just to make sure we're as transparent as possible with our community. Their decision was data-driven. It was not and could not be driven by emotion. But we all realize, the committee realizes, the Board of Education realizes, and I realize, that the final outcome is an emotional decision for our impacted families. We get that. We're our parents, too. We were all once high school students. Most of us participated in activities when we were in high school. Some of us have been coaches, some of us have been advisors. And so we understand that perspective, the perspective of our parents, students, coaches, and advisors. We know our citizens love their schools, and we're glad that they do. I love them, too, and I'm proud of them, and I'm proud of our school system. However, as Tim documented in his report, we are continually a rapidly growing system, and with that growth comes challenges and change. It's inevitable. Lambert, West, and South were all once brand-new high schools, too. They started with reluctant students and parents, but they all forged their identity and their greatness, and so will Denmark. Over the years, we've had many students have been redistricted from one existing school to another, and as I said earlier, that's tough, and we know it. Our school leaders do a great job of welcoming new students and new families. They work to make the transition as smooth as possible, and they will this time as well. Our principals and staff at each school will work hard with our existing and incoming students and families to build great relationships. They will make sure we have a culture and climate at each school that's conducive to teaching and learning. They will rebuild our existing school communities, and they will build the new Denmark community. With everyone working together, students, parents, business leaders, and our school families, this can and will happen quickly, and that's in the best interest of all of our students. Our principals and their staff's goal will be for all students, new and existing, to have a great high school experience. All of our high schools will serve their students and communities well. And like I said earlier, regardless of the final outcome, and we're not there yet, we know that those that don't want to be moved are going to be displeased. I do ask that we all keep this in the proper perspective. By any metric available, Forsyth County students attend one of the best, if not the best, public school system in our state, in fact, one of the best in our nation. Our school system is the reason many of our citizens moved to Forsyth County. It's one of the reasons for our growth. Regardless of whether a high school student attends Lambert, South, West, Central, North, Denmark, or Alliance, they will all attend an outstanding high school. They will all be afforded the opportunity to receive a great education. They will all have the opportunity to compete and participate in outstanding and extracurricular programs. These opportunities are not available everywhere in our country. We're fortunate. Our children are fortunate, and that's why I ask that all of us to please keep this in the proper perspective. Mr. Perkel, to you and your team, thank you for doing what you believe is in the best interest of Forsyth County schools. That's precisely what you and your committee were charged to do. The floor is yours.
Okay, thank you. The redistricting committee's objectives are to populate Denmark High School at a level that provides the school with the capacity to offer and develop programs that are comparable to other Forsyth County high schools. We were to reduce overcrowding at South, Lambert, and West, to balance projected enrollments to minimize temporary classrooms, the modular classrooms, and our sixth and final objective was to maintain consistent feeder patterns with our current high schools as best we can while establishing a clear, consistent feeder pattern to Denmark within established feeder pattern guidelines, which is a minimum of twenty-eighty. I do want to clarify that, something with that that was misunderstood, that the twenty-eighty feeder pattern, I got some feedback that that was the committee's goal. Twenty-eighty feeder pattern is not our goal. The twenty-eighty feeder pattern is our minimum. That's what we say, if we look at a feeder pattern and it's ten-ninety, then obviously that hasn't met our minimum, and we need to go back and rethink that. So, I mean...
Your goal would be fifty-fifty.
Our goal would be fifty-fifty, or, you know, in some situations where we can have a hundred percent feeder pattern, that's amazing. But obviously, with the district, our size and the number of elementary versus middle versus high schools, that's not possible at this point. But anyway, I just wanted to clarify that that was a minimum. The other, one other thing that I also wanted to clarify is that from the summary document where we said that for the number for Denmark was sixteen-ninety, I wanted to also clarify that that number does not, or that number actually includes the seniors, so we have to subtract that number off of that, plus we have to subtract any out-of-district, you know, any out-of-district requests that we think that we would have, so any forecasted requests for that. So we're looking at somewhere probably in the neighborhood of when that, all those things happen, and this is just a, you know, a best estimate, is thirteen, somewhere around thirteen-hundred students. So, you know, I wanted people to understand that that sixteen-ninety still has the seniors and counted in that number. So given the redistricting committee's objectives, and after reviewing all the feedback the committee had, the following recommended changes to the district line draft, that was Ronald Reagan, south of Majors Road, is proposed to be extended to Shallow Road and McFallon Parkway, which is within the new Denmark High School boundary. Therefore, we have selected those communities along Ronald Reagan to be redistricted. Their current feeder pattern is Shallow Point, Pine Grove, and South Forsyth High School. Their new feeder pattern will be Shallow Point, Pine Grove, and Denmark. This moves a projected sixty students from South High to Denmark. And those areas, that area includes Oxford Summit, Summit Crossing North, Summit Crossing, all part of the Oxford Summit complex. So that was the area that we looked at. Also, proximity and issues related to proximity to a specific school campus, the committee realizes has been a primary motivating factor identified in the feedback, both by those who support it as by those who oppose it. However, proximity considerations did not override the six primary objectives that we have listed, that we felt that we were using to, or that we were using to redistrict and achieve those things that we have listed there. The committee spent a great deal of time reviewing all the feedback that was submitted online, including reviewing multiple options other than those proposed in the draft based on the feedback that was received. For example, we looked at transportation cost, proximity, travel time, feeder patterns. The committee's goal after receiving community feedback was to determine if those other options or other options existed that would provide a better way for the school district to meet these six objectives for this high school redistricting process than what was recommended in our first recommendation, our first recommended draft. And after its review, the committee has concluded that this draft, as amended, provides the school district as a whole with the best plan to accomplish these six objectives. And I do want to go back and reiterate that we spent many, several, several hours, a lot of time, going back to look at areas to say, and looking at all these things to say, okay, if we do this, what will this, what will happen? If we do this, what will happen? And can we do this, or can we do that? So there was a lot of time spent. In the end, we came back to, always came back to these six objectives to say, you know, do we meet these objectives in this plan? So based on that, we had, again, the one recommendation or the one recommended change that we've made into, for this draft that we present. And going back to the timeline is, I know that the board, you know this, but I just wanted to restate it, that, so we've presented the redistricting draft with revisions, then at your October seventeenth meeting, that will be the meeting where you, as a board, will approve that draft. And as a reminder, there also will be a public forum at West Forsyth High School at six p.m. on October the twenty-fourth for high school, as well as then a public forum for the elementary section on October the twenty-third at six p.m. at North Forsyth High School. So that kind of takes us down for the next...
Let me just comment on the cost factor for a second, because we'd get a lot of feedback on that. Our transportation department did an audit, and our transportation cost could go up by about ten thousand dollars a year with this proposed redistricting. However, the removal of one portable classroom saves thirty thousand a year. So the efficiency realized as the redistricting committee is going through this process is by removing portables. The transportation cost is insignificant in comparison when you're removing portables.
Mr. Perkel, a lot of the questions we get, I mean, we've all started delving through, reading all of the online surveys, which has taken some time, I'm sure we're all well into that at this point. A lot of the common questions we see in there, when is it gonna be best appropriate to answer those questions? For example, we know that South High is the most overcrowded, and Lambert and West slightly below that, so a lot of the questions are, for example, why is West not, I think we know some of those answers, but why is West not being reduced as much, or why have we not looked at some of the other areas to move? Some of these very popular, common questions. When is a good time for those general questions to be answered?
I think we, the committee talked about that, and I think that we said after the public forums at your called board meeting on November the second would be a good time that we can hopefully...
Because of the public forum, that's just us receiving input, there's no back and forth of that, right?
That's right.
And there may be other questions surface at that time at the public forum that we're gonna wanna address on the second as well. So I think, because we already have the called meeting scheduled for that date.
Right.
And that would be the time to do it.
I can see that. I could just think in some ways, if we answered some of those questions sooner than later, it might help some of the input at the public forum.
Well, I think a lot of it has to do with the five-year projections, too, that the committee is looking at the total map and what's happening when the next high school is built, when the next elementaries are built, and the next middle schools are built, which I think a lot of the community doesn't understand that, how you... which I think a lot of the community doesn't understand that, how you may not take out of West because when, when North shifts and takes out of West, you know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of data that goes on with the five-year projections that, that I could say, obviously, that is the information that you worked with as a committee very, very carefully.
Right, and, and I know, and I realize that I, that, that I did not go into detail about that when, when the draft was presented, the first time that it was presented. But, but, but I did say that the committee certainly took into consideration the opening of East High, of East.
Yes, you did.
The high school in the east part of the county that, and, and we, and so you're right. So in, in keeping that in mind, we had to look at West, and, you know, the West district kinda is blocked and goes up. So if you go up closer to West, and then when East opens and you take all that, I mean, that's gonna, that's gonna, that's gonna have an effect on, on what we needed to do when we opened East High School. Not that that will be the name of the high school, but.
Yes, we're still hoping. We're still hoping.
So, but yes, but we can, but others, I know there are other things other than that that, that you're talking about that we can. So hopefully, maybe by then, that you all can send individually, which would, would help us if there are anything that you know of, too, that you're hearing that you can send to us or to me. And then when the committee meets, we can compile hopefully some, you know, just we wanna be sure we're prepared to.
I think we have some of my frequently asked questions already.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Perkel. Feature agenda items? I know Nancy, we talked about the legislative parties. We're gonna do that at the next.
Next weekend, next week.
Next week. Is there anything else? Does anybody like to have on there? Darla, you did? All right, we have no action items this evening? Do we have a motion to go in an executive session for personnel?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Thomas, second by Darla, all in favor? That is unanimous.